And there was one other thing.
Um, yeah, I think just it, it, that one particular incident, there was also a stolen vehicle that netted some, some different things. And then just overall in the last two weeks, it's probably been one of the busiest times I've seen our officers responding to incidents that related into drugs, and now in drugs.
One of the things that impressed me on TV coverage this weekend was how much response time was discussed. And one of the, one of the reasons that we need more officers in Montrose is our response time is more than what it should be. And by getting more officers, we're going to reduce that also. So he can speak to those two things.
Yep. You know, I think first I can just kind of go over response times right now for a priority one call. In other words, that means, that means officers are needed now. We're actually quite high. We're at 16 minutes and IACP recommends a four to seven minute response time. Interestingly enough, I did attend a conference call that was hosted by the FBI on Sunday. The FBI and Homeland Security are very concerned overall about all of the recent mass shootings in the United States. And interestingly enough, one of the things that was mentioned, along with response times, officers have to be properly trained and properly equipped. And in the Dayton incident, the officers responded within less than a minute. So that incident was ended with an officer using a patrol rifle to take out the bad guy because he was wearing body armor. And so that goes to equipment and then Dayton trains their officers for active shooter. Interestingly enough, here in two weeks, we'll be hosting an active shooter training for our police officers. So, and we, this isn't the first time we train that, we train that every, every year. But we have a lot of new officers and so that's, that's one of the priorities for sure. But we do need to work on our response times and quite honestly, having more officers is going to help with that. That's, that's the reality of it, plain and simple. Tim, do you want to come up and do you want to go over the incidents? Tim, Tim pretty much was on board for all of these different incidents over the weekend and so I think I'm going to have him kind of present to you guys just a quick overview of what occurred.
So to start off with, I think you guys are all well aware of this SWAT operation we had on the Weldon Road address. It started with, actually it came from a citizen's complaint of a lot of traffic going on over there. So between multiple field interview contacts with people coming in and going from that location and traffic stops, we were able to get enough problem caused to get a search warrant for that residence. We ended up coming up with about 17 grams of airworth during that search warrant conducted there between all the other traffic stops. I don't have all the exact numbers, but we were able to get that airworth on about every contact we made coming and going from that residence. So weren't able to do these proactive contacts and like put our resources towards that location. It's very productive and I think that's what we're looking at in the future with street crimes, you know, being able to do these type of operations.
Tim, could you put that in context for me? Seventeen grams is how many use, how many usages out of that?
So that's about 170 points, they call it. So about 170 different doses is what I've noticed.
And I was going to go over just some of the last weekend events. So that bag of meth, which is 28 grams of meth, was recovered on a separate traffic stop the morning before our SWAT operation by Michelle Berry that wasn't related to the Weldon Road address. And so it's here. The concerning thing though, and I think I want to make it real clear, when we have these types of drug houses, we need to respond. They're making the residents, and that's in this case what occurred. We had a complaint from a citizen and I won't go in further than that, but we had a complaint from a citizen that this kind of activity was going on. And so we don't have the normal patrol resources to handle something like that, so we use overtime. And that's really what it comes down to, is using overtime to then conduct SWAT operations, things like that. And right now our officers are on 12 hour shifts. So we're trying to handle these types of things. We're trying to handle being good respondents for the community events. We'll be working, and we should be working Funk Fest this weekend, especially with, as you can see with the Garlic Festival and some of the other mass shooting incidents. And I'm not fear mongering, but we need to be there. So we're doing those events, we're doing these types of things, and then we're also working sometimes, well, we're on 12 hour shifts right now and those oftentimes go into 14, sometimes 15 hour shifts. So we have officers that are working in the street that are tired and honestly, I'm having a hard time getting them to sign up for overtime opportunities like Funk Fest, but we're doing it. But we just need more people.
So with something like Funk Fest, you're not pulling officers that are on duty off the street. You need additional officers and therefore you're paying them overtime and that's a volunteer basis thing.
Correct. Well, it's a volunteer basis to a point until I can't get anybody and then I, I have to tell someone that they, they're working because we have to cover it. It actually hasn't come to that point yet and our officers are doing really well. We are also covering, there's a lot of stuff down there at night. So there's a lot of equipment down there at night, the stage. We're having a lot of issues with graffiti on our trails and our park system. And so we're not going to leave that stuff and I think Virgil's also going to be down there too to coordinate. But we're not going to leave that stuff alone. We can't. And so we have two nights that we're covering, we're making sure an officer is down there specifically for that stuff. So, so it's just a lot of stuff and we have a lot of other things that are straining our staff. And I have a presentation which will be fine tuning and I would appreciate your guys' input into that presentation. I just, that's why I was a little bit, it was a long time, but a little bit late. I just emailed that to you guys. So, and I have no ownership in it. I want to, I want feedback. So that's, that's to you or sent out to you, but let me know when, or if you want me to go over it right now, I can certainly do that, but you tell me.
So is Tim going to give us more?
If you guys would like, I can go over some of the stuff that we had over the weekend as well. We had, for example, on Friday, we had a stolen vehicle recovered on Towns and where we had a guy who ended up being arrested for possession of Schedule Two and Schedule One heroin and meth again, large amounts. We also were able to associate that back to a bunch of first degree criminal trespasses where they broke into people's vehicles here within the city of Montrose and stole wallets, credit cards, all that kind of stuff. So we're able to also get that down on my person.
So in that particular arrest, something, Tim, that gun, that's a SIG, that's a stolen gun out of Mesa County. That was part of the stolen vehicle that the guy was in and then as you can see, all the meth paraphernalia around it. So that guy had multiple warrants and then of course we recovered, or we returned some stolen property. So that's my concern is that we have, it's not just the drugs, it's also the firearms. We've recovered three firearms in the last two weeks, a short shotgun, a 22 caliber pistol, and now this thing that was a stolen firearm. That's just within the last two weeks from the last time I told you, here's what's going on in Montrose. So it's a problem.
Can you mention what was happening Saturday afternoon or evening on South Townsend? I happened to drive by and saw a lot of action. I don't know if you can talk about it.
That was the stolen vehicle.
Oh, that was.
Yeah, the officer located it there at the, it's the stop and save right there. You know, and you bring up a good point. We've been criticized and I think recently, we've been asked, you know, we see so many officers, you know, why, why do you need more officers? You've got plenty and they're all just kind of standing around on the side of the road. It's really important to note that as people go by those incidents, they don't know what's going on. And in that particular case, it was a stolen vehicle with that stolen gun tucked right there in the driver's side. So we made two arrests out of that incident. We are going to respond heavily when we can because we just don't know. We're not going to respond heavily to a barking dog and we're not going to respond heavily to someone who's making a complaint about traffic or issues like that. But this is the 10 year anniversary of when we lost an officer and it's better to err on the side of caution. We're also in a training mode right now and so we have a vehicle that has two officers in it. We can't just hire a police officer and let them out in the city. They have to be trained. It's a three month training program. And so their trainee technically doesn't count because they're supposed to let the trainee, excuse me, the trainer doesn't count. They let the trainee do the, do the work. So they have to stand back and allow the trainee to learn. And so you're going to see at times what looks like an overabundance of officers because of those reasons. And so it's important for the community to know that. I think sometimes it's just not understanding some of those situations.
But the majority of the drug busts, there's also a gun involved?
Several of them within the last two weeks, yes. There has been a gun involved. That's the reason why we used the SWAT team is because we had quite a bit of intelligence that these individuals had weapons. We recovered a lot of ammunition and magazines there at the residence. Interestingly enough, we didn't recover any firearms. The main target of the operation wasn't there at the time when we served our warrant, but we did arrest him later.
But wouldn't, I mean, does that lead you to think that the firearm is with him, a firearm?
It's a possibility. Yeah, it's a possibility. You know, it's, it's interesting because even though this happened, that doesn't necessarily mean that this problem goes away from that residence. In fact, we were, we were watching it afterwards and an individual immediately returned and started guarding something else that we then later got consent to search for. And they had a hidden room. So that's where it's important for the public to understand, we need resources to help abate these properties after we've served a search warrant. Otherwise, they're just going to crop right back up. And that's where that public safety attorney really comes into play to move forward with, with helping, helping us with that. So just throw that out there.
I think sometimes we miss that blame. We talk about additional staff being hired and we maybe forget to mention that it's more than just patrol officers.
Correct.
It's detectives, it's, you just used a more appropriate term. It's an attorney that's particularly involved with law enforcement.
No, you're right. Out of the, out of the 20 positions that we're requesting, actually only three, three patrol officer positions are being requested to supplement our shifts. Every other sworn position is actually to increase the size of our detective division because we're trying to investigate on average 69 sexual assaults per year, which requires 60 man hours of work per case. We're all, we all, as you can all see, we have a huge traffic issue and a traffic problem in Montrose with a lot of road rage incidents and then just general accident traffic safety stuff. We're asking for, you know, more dedicated traffic enforcement. And then of course, the street crimes unit to get a handle on this drug situation. So there's, there's a lot of proactive requests that we're making. And in turn, by doing that, we're hoping that it will actually free up some of our patrol officers' time to then be more proactive too by taking some of those felony case investigations away from them, traffic accident investigation, things like that. So it's all part of a, kind of an ecosystem that lives together.
Did you have more with your presentation you wanted to go over with us or?
So.
Do you want to pop it up on the screen?
I can.
So Blaine, based on input from his longer presentation, he's tweaked the presentation to make it more visual, shorter and a little more compact. We wanted to just run it by you. I know you have it in your emails, but if we can, put it up there and get some feedback.
Put it on the screen, let me go.
And maybe I'm not sure the council knows how many meetings have already been scheduled for public safety sales tax presentations if you want to maybe.
I can run through that while Blaine's setting that up. So Blaine and I know staff have, we've all been working together to make this happen. Mr. Rugg, some of the, we, man staff, representative of the citizens, mayor, I'll be there. Blaine, so starting last week, we have a meeting tomorrow at lunch rotary. Actually, we start there at 7:30. 7:30 in the morning is P A C and that's carryover from the Chamber of Commerce to the Mayor's Council. Then around noon, the Rotary Lunch presentation. And then we go and talk with the height, the school principals for the school district Thursday morning at nine o'clock. And then Thursday at noon is the Casa Forum. And then Thursday afternoon, there's a citizen committee update meeting, just a weekly meeting that's been put on the calendar for the citizen committee and the police department team updating each other on what's happening, what's going on, how are the presentations going and that type of thing. This year, they're really going to start, or this week, start pushing out information. And then next week, there's a bunch of other presentations and I think this is all sent to you to mark your calendars, but Monday morning and next week, there's a presentation to the Board of County Commissioners at their work session. There is a meeting next week with the committee again as an update on Tuesday at three o'clock. There is a radio show Wednesday, the 14th in the morning.
We've got principals moving.
That's this week. Let's start. My calendar.
Okay.
District principals on the eighth at nine o'clock. Blaine gets his calendar. Mine goes Thursday, the eighth system.
So you've mentioned the committee. Are we speaking to the Blue Ribbon Public Safety Committee? Have they agreed to continue?
Yeah, Phoebe has taken a leadership role, the transition from the Blue Ribbon Panel to a Citizen Action Committee to carry the idea out into the community and start gathering community support and then bring together volunteers to go door to door and just to really do the campaign part of it because the city staff can't be too much involved in the campaign side of things. Elected officials, as we've talked about, can be more involved at whatever level you want to be. But Phoebe will be leading that as well as David Reed helping her out. And I think they're already starting to gather support and people. So I'm interested to see what's happened over the last week and get that update on Thursday. And then I think Blaine will have good input for that committee to let them know, how did the several presentations go this week? What was the reaction? And then just ideas on how to make these presentations shorter and more concise and more visually impactful. And I know OBT's helping out with that as well. Kelly and Kaylee and Chelsea, really it's a full team effort over there. Williams working on a video, getting a video out to the community on social media and working with, going to be working with both the Mirror and the Daily Press to get the word out as much as we can over the next couple of months. And so just putting one page infographics together to be able to buy some ad space and get those things out, or the citizen committee can buy ad space and do that if it's after the date where we actually set something, if council finalizes that. So maybe run through that and then I, we can go over the one page summary that I sent everybody.
Then August 8th, I think Tim was saying someone had a question about principals or the, the district leadership team meeting?
We're going to verify the date.
Yeah, August 8th at 9:00 AM.
Are these all being updated on that Google Doc number?
Uh, that one, I believe is up there, but yes, they are. I just don't know.
14th, 6:30 is Central Office.
So that was the initial date that we got, but I talked to Jim Pavlich over the weekend and changed it. Yeah, that was an over the weekend one. So I can, I can update that. It sounds like it was not updated on that.
The 14th is the Republican Central Committee though, 6:30 AM.
Yes.
Oh, is that at Central, is that at Central Office for the school district?
I don't know.
That's where they normally meet.
Okay, that's what, okay.
They have a rock place, having Christ.
You said Central Office, I thought that was the principal. But we've got a lot of things already planned and it is important that we get in as many meetings as possible before council votes on the 14th ballot. Because most of them do that, then staff is much more limited on how they can. We'll be discussing that in a little bit.
And we've had a few presentations already. We had the Democrats, met with them over at Two Rascals and that was well received. A lot of good input from that group. And then Morning Rotary, we talked to them and got good input and actually that's where we learned that the presentation's too long because we ran out of time at Rotary. So we're going to go back to round two here in a couple of weeks. So please don't hesitate to give us feedback.
So yeah, like what Bill just said, please, please do not hesitate. So this is supposed to be, this is the working draft to the presentation that we'll be giving at our two town hall meetings and then the Casa Forum event. And it is just a draft. So I'm going to go over just three slides as far as what we're facing today and the number of incidents, the trend that we've seen over the last nine years or eight years. We've seen a 34% increase in total incidents. We've seen a 51% increase in our felony crime. In 2018, we cleared 724 felony incidents that were reported to our officers. And so that's over two felony incidents per day for a total of 31,000 incidents that we cleared initially with patrol officers in 2018.
For those of us who are uninformed, what makes it be a felony?
So.
Because you're evidently saying felonies are more important than misdemeanors, so why?
Because that's how they're classified statutorily. So burglaries, sexual assaults, drug crimes, car break-ins, major property crimes like fraud. We have an individual running around, they hit New Vista for about $12,000 in ATM thefts. So they apparently somehow got a hold of several individuals debit cards. That would be a major felony crime.
Thank you.
Yep. And of course, caveat to that, that's, that's what takes that 60 man hours of investigation. And then we have to classify which is most important. Right off the top is sexual assaults. So, and that's what our detectives are focusing on. So all of that relates into our response times, kind of what the mayor was talking about earlier. Our priority one, you need a police officer now. Current response time is 16 minutes and 57 seconds and that's double, more than double the national average of what the International Association's use of police recommend. So I guess the point I'm trying to make also with those three graphs is that you can see the trend lines are all fairly accurate. They all follow each other. So this is an adaptation of that original slide that I had that really named the whole department, but I really want everyone to focus on the fact that we have six patrol officers at maximum capacity, 27 patrol officers, six patrol sergeants. So that's 33 officers responding to 31,000 incidents last year. Of course, we were down a little bit last year and so we didn't quite have that many, but that's our maximum authorized sworn. And then we have three detectives and one detective sergeant. And it's really important to note that sergeants need to be supervising. They don't need to be taking cases. They can and they do, but they need to be on the streets supervising. That detective sergeant needs to be supervising his detectives in those cases. When you have a detective sergeant investigating crimes, it can, it can become an issue.
So some feedback. I know it's really obvious to you that this is the total number, not the number on the street at any given time.
Yep.
But you know, we've talked about the, people have a misperception that there's way more officers on the street at a time.
Yep.
And I wonder if there's a way to make it really clear when people see these numbers that you don't mean at any given moment, this is who's working.
That's, that is great feedback and it's in here.
Okay.
It's coming.
We might want to relocate it in the presentation.
Okay.
So then that question doesn't come up.
Sure. Okay. I can.
Sometimes when people see something, it just, it's in there, like there's 27 officers at a time on the street.
Okay.
Whether it changes what they think is the truth then to.
Let me, let me do this slide and then it'll pop up. So this is what we're dealing with today. This is Montrose today. And actually, Montrose, a lot of this within the last two weeks. That's the parolee short shotgun on the traffic stop. That's the armed robber at Alta. That's the 28 grams of meth that we recovered on a traffic stop here just this last week. That is another traffic stop with black tar heroin, meth and cash from a drug dealer. That's the stolen gun and the meth from the stolen vehicle that we had on Saturday that Roy mentioned. He saw the activity. Those are five sexual offenders that the, we worked with the FBI on a sting that came to Montrose to have sex with underage children. That was last year. Of course, we've got traffic congestion issues, all for this. This is the number of officers that we have on shift at any given time. Now, there's a sergeant that supervises that crew. For 31,000 incidents for all of those things that we just described. And all of those things, the, isn't the total number of things that we are dealing with. And that's, that's where we're having our problems, to be quite honest. We have to become more proactive. We have to get a handle on this stuff right here. Because if we can disrupt this stuff and make it not pleasant for drug dealers and these types of individuals to be in our community, then we will see a reduction in crime. And I'm happy to take more feedback along that. This is three present, or three slides coming up that describe city's funding. And I think it's important to note, the point I will make on this is that Public Works and Public Safety are funded out of the general fund. All of those other bubbles surrounding the city of Montrose's total $58.3 million budget outside of the general fund are things that Public Safety or Public Works cannot be funded or streets can't be funded. And so we share the general fund. And actually, that's kind of a understatement because 45% of general fund money, 21 million, goes towards public safety.
You should put some kind of a title on this slide.
Okay.
The point of the slide, because it wasn't obvious when it's.
Sure.
I, I did that percentage. No, I, I did that percentage that says how much, what percentage goes to public safety?
Sure.
What percentage even goes to Public Works? Because that shows you there's not much left after those two things happen.
It's 25% go to Public Works, it's 25% that goes to admin. Shane?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, I just, it was, but I, I just wanted to make sure I was right. Okay. Percentages.
Would a pie chart be better? I don't know.
I've got a pie chart. I've, I've, honestly, I was just trying to cut this thing down and make it like a...
Okay, just a thought.
Most of these presentations are, are 30 minutes, and so I was hoping for a 15- to 20-year presentation, and then 10 minutes of questions, 10 to 15 of questions. So, I was hoping I could talk about a lot of these things, uh, but I can add a, I can add that pie chart to make it more visible.
Just a question.
Or we can pop, we can pop it out of that top bubble here, on the top.
I just think this whole thing could be represented by a pie chart, and then the, the pie chart, the piece that is general fund could be popped out again.
Okay, okay. You can do that, I've got it in the notes. Uh, this next slide, I think you've seen this one before, and that's, of course, how much the City of Montrose has dedicated in public safety funding since 2011, uh, to the tune of 2.1 million, 2.2 million, um, in the last eight years. And, uh, most all of that is towards staff increases, staff increases. So, this is a concern, and I start it with a question, what do you think is going to happen when Mesa County passes their public safety sales tax about a year and a half, two years ago? And the Grand Junction, the City of Grand Junction passed their public safety sales tax just this last April. The Delta County, or Delta County, uh, has, or has, is intending on putting a ballot issue on the November ballot to share a public safety sales tax, 1% between the City of Delta and the County of Delta for public safety. Here's what's gonna happen, and it's already starting to happen. Individuals that are committing crime in those jurisdictions are going to move somewhere else where they have more insulation. That's just the fact of the matter, and so, we, we have to do something, and, and I know that, uh, it's a priority and it, and you guys are doing something, but this is another reality that we have to face.
That's a really important point in the whole presentation. I mean, that, that really hits home and tells you, as a citizen, if we do nothing, what's gonna happen? I mean, that's, you know what I'm trying to say? It, it's really kinda the brunt of the message, I guess.
Well, and I, and I think, I think it also shows that Montrose, in a lot of ways, is no different than the other Western Slope, Slope communities. We didn't just decide this out of the blue. This isn't something that we, you know, that you guys, you guys have been talking about this since the middle of 2018, and so has everybody else on the Western Slope, because they're all seeing the same crime trends, and they're all trying to get a handle on it, with a lack of resources that they currently have. We're not unique. Um, so, you know, really, our overall mission is that we want to become proactive instead of reactive, and we wanna flip, we wanna flip that scale. We need to start focusing on our high-profile offenders, and that's our ask. We're asking for proactive units, because we think that by making it very difficult to be here in Montrose, that's gonna reduce our crime. And it's like this guy here that burglarized the youth sports complex, and we got him, we arrested him. We want to flip that, and wanna become proactive. But we gotta have the resources to do it. So, speaking of resources, that's where this slide comes in. We need to bolster our shifts and have six shifts with six officers each, and that includes the sergeant, so that we can have a minimum staffing of five at any given time, and then that sixth officer, we're not having to rob Peter to pay Paul in case we have sick-time coverage, or vacation coverage, or training coverage.
How many hours on a shift?
We wanna go back to 10-hour shifts, because honestly, we're working our officers to death and they're tired.
Because how many hours on a shift right now?
Twelve, we're on 12s.
But they're working 15 minutes.
But they work longer.
Right, but even a 12-hour day, uh, not many people work a 12-hour day, that's, particularly with that level of stress.
And then, of course, we wanna increase our detective unit by three, because we think that by doing that, and the stats show that three is the number that we need, by doing that, we can pull the felony crime investigations that patrol are currently investigating, because our detectives are doing nothing but sex assaults, back into detectives, and that should free up patrol's time to be more proactive. That's why we're not asking for a lot of patrol officers, just general patrol. And then, we need two more school resource, resource officers, so that we can have full-time coverage of school resource in our schools. High school, full-time coverage in both middle schools, and then an officer to cover Vista, and then we'd share the elementary schools. As you can see with some of the mass shootings that we've had recently, in 2018, we had 18 total threats to our schools in the City of Montrose, and we made nine arrests just after the Parkland incident. We had kids, a kid that was posting a picture of him holding an AR-15 that he posted on, uh, one of these social media sites, that said, "Don't come to MHS tomorrow." So, it's here. We have traffic issues, and then we have lots of graffiti park issues, and we would be asking for a two-person traffic unit, primarily for aggressive driving enforcement, and also to pull our traffic accident investigation away from general patrol. We trained these two individuals so that they could even investigate our fatal traffic accidents, because right now, we're having to rely on Colorado State Patrol to come in, uh, which takes, God bless them, but it takes us longer to get results. And we, at one point, did have a Level 3 traffic accident investigator, which means that they're qualified to work on those types of cases. We'd like to get back to that. And then, we'd also like to increase our park safety, and so we'd be able to use this unit to ride our motorcycles to get into the trail system, to make sure that they're not getting vandalized and things like that, so... And hopefully, with moving traffic investigation away from patrol, they could then be more proactive. Uh, right now, as it stands, we're responding to places like Walmart for private property traffic accidents. Most cities actually don't take those anymore with a, with a first responder. Either have you reported online or do something else, and that's not something that we are considering right now, but as our resources become dwindling, it may be something we'll consider, if we, possibly if we can't get more individuals. Of course, we talked about intelligence-led policing. It's not just putting these people out on the street, it's with a focus and a direction, and a crime intel analyst would help us identify who our top 6% high-profile offenders are that are committing most of our crimes. And then, we have proactive street crimes unit that then goes after them. That's really what it comes down to. And then, the backside of it, we come up with a public safety attorney. Uh, we've met actually several times with, uh, Dan Hotson-Peller, our district attorney, and in Mesa County, the district attorney's office actually supports Mesa County Sheriff's Office with a, an attorney that helps Mesa County with nuisance abatements. And that's the other side of it, like with Weldon Road, just because we hit it with a SWAT team, doesn't mean that that problem doesn't return. And so, first, we have to work with the property owner to try to help with eviction processes and things like that, but if we have a property owner that honestly doesn't live in this community, and we've dealt with that before, where they don't care, because they're not here, then that's where we move in with a public safety attorney to handle the legal end of it, to help abate that property.
Type on a bit.
Oh, yep, I already was made aware of that, thank you. And then, of course, the civilian support that's required to support this type of operation, two more records techs, and then two more civilian report takers, or two civilian report takers, not more, to help take some of the low-level reports like lost property, found property, things like that, away from a patrol officer, again, so that they can be more proactive. So, and then, we can't do that without a new building.
Do some stuff real quick.
Yep.
Back to that slide.
Yep.
So, this one, we thought looks too busy, but we need ideas on how to, it's kinda all different angles and...
Personally, I just, I like bullet points that'll line up in a row that are easier to read, but you were maybe going for something splashy?
I was.
I'd ask Kelly, she's good at this stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, ask marketing to dress it up a little, I don't know, you know, big letters over a faded background or something, where the badge isn't that important and the text is, but I'm not a artist.
My screen came in different than even Barbara's. Barbara's looks like yours.
I just emailed that, too.
And see, so Barbara's is mine.
But mine's looks different than hers.
Barbara's, Barbara's looks just, just like the screen, but see, not like mine. So, you, you don't wanna get to a presentation and have that show up.
No, you don't.
I think Kelly can help you.
That's a technical issue that I'm, that's beyond my, but I appreciate you letting me know. We'll get it figured out.
Other than that, our pages have been...
No, they're not, your badge is gold and mine is gray.
The other pages have been filed.
But look at that, too.
Mine's all bad.
And Bill mentioned that this morning, he had a different-looking presentation. I don't know if, maybe it's versions of PowerPoint that aren't communicating, I don't really know.
You built your presentation with a font that's probably not as popular as, you may have a custom font.
Is that crazy?
See how mine is?
That's why we need these test ones. I think it's...
So, that's why the bad, if, the bad to us is that mine would look pretty good.
Yeah.
It's those good blur effects.
And I think we took too long on one slide.
On the, uh...
On that last slide.
On that last slide.
That took about 10 minutes of your 15-minute presentation, if we're trying to...
Yeah, and I, and I, once again, I'm not sure how to say, "Here's what we need," without explaining, "Here's why we need it." So, yeah, it's hard. It's difficult. And then, uh, here's our building, our current building, 6,000 square feet, uh, to house, um, approximately 64 employees, and I, we can expect to add potentially 20 more employees. Uh, right now, we are considering, um, expanding, Phil Rostie just came back with, from his latest training, and, uh, received quite a bit more, um, computer crimes equipment from the federal government, and now, we're not sure where to put it. So, we're, we're, sorry, we're, we're exploring some ideas there. So, here's how much 20 employees would cost in the first year, and then, uh, forever after that, it costs us $175,000 to hire an employee for the first year, for personnel and equipment costs, and then about $99,000 thereafter in the following years. And then, a new police facility to include renovations would cost around $11.5 million. The good news is, we already own the land, which is the old Wells Fargo Drive-In. And so, that really concludes it. These are the things that we're dealing with. And what I planned on doing was just saying, Alta Vis, or the Alta Convenience Store armed robbery, parolee with the shotgun, there's your suspect for $12,000 at New Vista, the ATM. This is the Christmas bag of meth, 28 grams of meth on a traffic stop just four days ago. Another four days ago with the heroin and the meth. This is our youth sports, youth sports complex burglar, and this is what we wanna get back to, because right now, we're buried, and that's just, that's just the truth of the matter. We have to get back to Montrose and what we know Montrose to be.
Can you go back to the, um, like, two slides before this, the 3 million the first year, 2 million after the, yeah, the slide there? So, in reality, could you really hire all the necessary new officers in one year? I mean, could we split this out in two years, and then we only need half of that the first year, or not half, but some less fraction?
So, in reality, could we hire 14 officers in the first year? Yeah, actually, we could with the way we've been working with HR, but training-wise would be a challenge for us. So, at most, we can train six to maximum seven officers per cycle. We don't have a summer academy that we can rely on, and so, if we, if all the stars aligned, that's 12 with a summer academy, and, or a spring academy and a fall academy, that could be 14. So, there is, but reality-wise, that probably won't happen. That number will probably be less, so...
So, I'm just looking at the finances and looking if there's, if we could get by with a little less money and spread it over two years.
I think Bill's gonna present some of those potential percentages to you, so I'll let him, I'll let him go through that, but it's a moving target, target, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have a great answer for you, I can just tell you what our maximum limits are, and then, what we could do.
Okay, thanks.
So, if we wanna, that, jump us into that one-page summary that was emailed out, uh, we, we might be able to just, if we end up doing what you're describing, we could pull that startup out of the equation and make it simpler to the messaging, uh, if we wanted to, whatever. Yeah? Thanks.
Well, and I'm looking for ways that we can, looking at your table here, move towards the smaller number rather than towards the highest number, only because if it doesn't pass, you get zero. And so, I'm thinking, you know, it's, the, the lower the number, the better it's gonna sound to everybody, and maybe the more likely number of votes you're gonna get for it. And so, I'm just trying to look for ways to make the number a little bit smaller rather than bigger.
You know, just the fact that in the beginning, the construction costs, you don't pay those out right away, you pay them as the bills, as the receipts come in. Can those two things kinda offset each other? You have some additional costs to start up the operations. Do you see what I'm saying? You also have...
Yeah, I just talked to Blaine about that this morning. Because you, if we were to borrow the money for the construction through a low-interest loan program, or however we wanna do it, then until you're done with that, you, it's their money you're working with, and so you're just having that annual repayment, uh, at the time of repayment. So, if you started collecting January 1 of 2020, you're banking that money through that first nine to 12 months during construction.
Right.
Which would cover any of, if we got lucky and were able to get 18 people out of the 20, you would have enough money to cover that. So, as, when, as we were looking through all these, uh, options, we might be able to go with a .5 versus a .55, for instance, because we can absorb that first year during the time of building. So, I was asked to put a, a slide together just showing all the, uh, variety of options we could be considering as far as a, a tax request, if you look at the, uh, requested funding down on the bottom.
Let me interrupt for just, what ideally will come out of this part of the meeting will be some kind of consensus that we can give to staff, so they can start working on ballot. I don't know if we'll be able to do that today, but if we could comfortably come up with the number, that would be great to get, get us moving forward. And, and right now, the, uh, committee that will be presenting this to the community is asking us to make a decision at the first meeting in September, September 3?
Yeah.
Just to...
So, today would just be consensus, so we'd know what to put in for that council packet on the 3rd?
And we can begin telling the community... And we can begin telling the community at the public safety sales tax meetings that this is the number that council's looking at.
Yeah, I think we should try to do that today.
That's important to keep on track here and not push this out.
So, Bill?
So, the, as we've talked about, the annual operations needed moving forward in perpetuity would be approximately 2.1 million. The building construction, approximately 11.5 million, that's based on the architectural estimates we received a couple of years ago. And then, that would be amortized over twenty-five years, which is approximately 700,000 in debt service if we, we base that model on USDA rural development, 3.5% loan program. So, that would be twenty-five years at three and a half percent would get us just shy, I rounded it a little bit up to make it an even 700,000, but it'd be just shy of that.
But did you say that 11.5 is a couple of years old? Because construction costs have gone up tremendously.
So, a couple of years, it was nine to eleven, so I put eleven and a half to try to capture that inflation. And that's to build the two stories and leave the third roughed in, but not totally finished on the third story to plan for future expansion. And then, that part would sunset after twenty-five years with the operation going in perpetuity. So, bare minimum to make it work, based on the model the PD is presenting, is what we need for our community. We need 2.8 million every year for twenty-five years to make the debt service and the operations. So, if we go up then, to what percentage would we need to capture that amount of money? Point four or five wouldn't be enough. We'd be shy. Point five, I think we could do it with point five and make it work. Point five-five would give us a little bit of cushion, planning for inflationary market analysis. We might be able to finish out the third story of the building. There are options that are still the things that we need that would give us more flexibility, but we could make it work with point five. And then, point six and point seven-five, after analyzing all the numbers, we think we don't need that amount of money, so we wouldn't want to ask the taxpayers for more than what we really need.
Really?
And then, next to that, we were asked to put in, "What is that when you pay $100 out in the community?" Just to put it in layman's terms for people, so that's 50 cents per $100 or 55 cents per $100. And then, on the right, there's a column showing all of our neighboring communities and what their total sales tax is. We didn't include property taxes because we didn't want to confuse the issue where people are focusing on our sales tax. They're not necessarily gonna care that a lot of these communities also have a property tax, which we don't have, but we thought that would confuse people. But if you wanted added, we can always add that to this sheet.
I think the fact that we don't have a property tax, we're not trying to hide anything. It's not as if these communities have a property tax or don't have a property tax and we do. We, we don't have a property tax. I think it's okay to leave it off. I don't think, we're trying to leave it off to misinform people.
I would agree.
If it was the other way around, I'd say it's important to include it.
Does it only help us for people to really understand that we don't have a property
Right, but it, but it is, it does kind of lead you into the weeds a little bit.
This chart's really good. It's very helpful, and I like, no matter what number we end up picking, this column that says rate per $100, really, I mean, when I think about a tax, I think, oh, God, you know, here's more money coming out of my pocket. But when you think about 50 cents for $100 that I just spent, it's not such a big deal. And, and I think these, that column is, like I said, whatever number we pick, that's an important point to take to people. And, and it buys you, as a citizen in our community, a lot.
So, since we haven't stated on here that the, the building expansion will sunset in twenty-five years, does that mean then the amount of sales tax collected will go down because we don't, okay?
So, really, we'd be voting on two different things, like a, a point, I don't, I don't do math in front of you really quickly here, but a certain point would sunset after twenty-five years, and another amount would be ongoing, and together, they would add up to the amount we decide on.
Yeah, if we did 0.5%, then after twenty-five years, it's approximately, knock it down to 0.4 as an example.
And so, that's important, that's important, too, to have that number. I can't do the math either, but I think that needs to all be part of the ordinance.
Right, and we, staff were chatting this weekend about that because it's a little bit confusing because there's the sales tax for the recreation district that also sunsets in the middle of all this new tax. And so, we were gonna reach out to GK Baum or some financial guys over in Denver to give us some verbiage advice on that because we don't want to rely on this amount, and then the sales tax for the rec center goes away, and then, overall, it reduces something because we worded it the wrong way. But, but yeah, we would, it's about a little over 300 if you look at the difference between 0.5 and 0.45, so dropping it down to, it'll end up being about 0.4 after you eliminate the debt service. But we'd have that exact, 0.39 or 0.41, whatever that is.
And we stay very competitive as far as sales tax compared to surrounding communities.
Yeah, if we did 0.5, that would put us right there in between Durango and Grand Junction. And then, there's talk, Judy Ann mentioned this morning, we might want to add, once Delta sets their ballot language, we might want to just put where Delta would fall in if there's passes or something like that, or proposed, and they would be at 0.5 more than they're at, so they'd be at 8.4.
Are they asking for 0.5?
They're asking for one split between the city and county.
Oh, one split between...
The city would be 0.5.
So, the city's ta, the sales tax would go 0.5 and the county's sales tax would go 0.5?
I guess is how they're doing that, but I guess it would really be a one.
It'd be a one? Because it's, it's sales tax.
Right.
So, they'd go with...
Because this rep, yeah.
Eight point nine.
Yes, so this sales tax represents, like, the, all the sales tax that folks pay that's cumulative between the 2.9 for the state of Colorado, the 1.75 that we pay to the county, and the 3.3 that goes through the city, 0.3 of which then goes to the rec.
Yes, it does. That's in that other chart you sent us.
So, really, Delta would go to 8.9.
Yeah, if that is what they set their ballot language at. That's my understanding, was that they were gonna do a one and then split the funding 0.5 and 0.5, I think is the way they're presenting it, between the city and the county.
I don't think we're gonna add it until they actually have final ballot language, just so. Anything else you'd like to see on the one-page summary, other than the proposed?
Other than the sunsetting part? I think that's important.
So, add in down, down here where it says sunset?
I guess, I would just like to see, let's say we were gonna go with 0.5, I'd like to see it kind of break down and say, 0.4 is ongoing and 0.1 sunsets in twenty-five years, or 0.41 is ongoing and 0.109 sunsets, and I just...
However it breaks out.
However it breaks out.
Yeah, absolutely. And the exact date that it goes away, I mean, be real clear in the, you know, in the legal language.
I like 25 years personally.
Yeah. Oh, you do, instead of a date? Well, see what these people in Denver suggest. There's a lot of psychology involved, and I don't understand it all, but I'm sure there are people who do, so... Well, I think 0.5 is kind of a upper number. I wouldn't want to go higher than that personally. I'd feel uncomfortable starting to ask for more than that 2.9 because we're still continuing to budget for our police department in the future like we have been. I mean, this is additional, but we still have the responsibility. I mean, I don't want anyone to think that this gives us a whole bunch of other money now that we used to give to the police department, and now, we're gonna spend it on something
No, the lang, the language, I just updated it last name, says that the 2018 actual PD budget will remain locked, so we'll continue to fund at the 2018 actual level as we move forward. So, this is over and above that. It's not to backfill.
Right, okay, good.
Why 18 and not 19?
Because we won't have actuals for 19 by November, so we'd be guessing on how much money that is, but the audit, audited numbers are, they're done now, I think, right?
Yeah, coming to us tomorrow.
So, that way, we have definitive number, well, how much is that? We can say exactly how much that is.
Well, so you want to reach consensus, I would argue for 0.5.
I'll support 0.5.
That's Doug, by the way, in case nobody knows. Doug, somehow, God wants us to do it to 0.5.
So, let it be written.
Like, all of a sudden, he chimes in.
I'd rather support the 0.5 unless there's somebody that wants to tell me reasons why we should up it to 0.55.
I, I'm sure would like to know some updated construction numbers. I just don't want us to, to do that and then learn that it's gonna be 14 million, and we are not going back to voters again. You know, that's not, this community has a very high expectation for, I think, our governments and how they spend their money, and we need to know that what we ask for will deliver what we're saying it asks for. And it just makes me slightly nervous that those construction numbers are not necessarily current.
We can try to do our best to get updated numbers.
Yeah, I don't, I mean...
We obviously don't have time to go do a full study or something, but Jim and I can get together and we'll talk to some contractors and do a gut check on it.
Yeah, somebody that can just do us a favor and give it a professional estimate, just what they think from their knowledge.
Yeah, it's just, that's easier said than done because they're all busy, and just getting them to call you back at the moment.
I know, I don't know how to do that. I just, that's the one part that just would make me a little nervous, is that that is not some locked-in number that we have from a very in-depth recent study, and yet, we're making a big decision based on it.
Yeah, out of all of it, that's the part, that's the one that makes me nervous, too, because we don't really know, we can only go by those architectural estimates.
And we sure would find ourselves in a tight spot if it came back and it was, it was gonna cost significantly more, and we had promised to deliver a two-story PD building, and flat out, that wasn't enough money.
We'll get cracking on that.
I may be able to call someone at IACP, too. I know they're gonna be hosting those building conferences, and maybe they can give me just a general per-square-footage cost, but that's also dependent on if they call me back and if, if that's accurate, because their idea of a police facility may be a lot more than what our idea is.
Probably a little more. We can talk to Aspen, too, they're, they just built one, and Shaw did that construction in their here local, so they could maybe...
Yeah, FCI and Shaw have built them before. We'd have to go off a square foot cost of something similar is without design, and, you know, we, square foot is really the best way to go after it, and then, they need design to a cost, so even if we determine that 11 million is the number, then we design to that.
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
I think that's what you gotta do at that point.
At that point, you have to do that, but that's easier said than done if that's not gonna get you what you told people it was gonna get you.
Yeah, if they say 15 million, then we'll tell you we need 0.55.
We can reach consensus today. We still have another work session, we actually have two more work sessions before the September third, and September third, we have to make a decision in order to get the ballot language in the county in time.
We'll do that right away.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that 0.5, looking at what that would, the revenue that would bring in with what we are looking at, and where that would put us in comparison to other local communities and their current sales tax rates.
Blaine and I are also going to a building conference in September, just to get, learn all we can about...
Too late, just a month late.
September 3.
Yeah. Just as a reminder, we're gonna go try to get some good feedback. And then, there's one in Colorado that we want to send, send some elected officials and some staff members to in early October, which is put on by an architectural firm. One we're going is the International Architectural Association. So, 0.5 right now is the general consensus, and we'll finish up the language with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Onto short-term rentals, and I apologize for those that maybe came and thought that you were gonna be first, but no worries, this is very...
I think you should do five lines.
And remember, remember where I quit, too.